Good evening, everybody. This is the regular scheduled meeting of the South Haven City Council. It's Monday, August the 21st, 2023. Let's call this meeting to order. And in lieu of somebody doing an invocation, we're going to observe a moment of silence. Thank you. And now if you join for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
A roll call, Megan.
Jeff Arnold.
Here.
Wendy Onuki.
Here.
Joe Reiser.
Here.
Steve Schleck.
Here.
George Sleeper.
Here.
Letitia Wilkins.
Here.
Scott Smith.
Here. And that takes us to our update from our Van Buren County Commissioner, Ms. Gail Patterson-Glady. And good evening, Gail. Thanks for coming.
Glad to be able to be here. I just wanted to mention that there's going to be another coastal leadership team training. And I don't know if your city manager would be interested again this year in learning more about it. We still have information that we'll be receiving. We had different leaders and interested parties from the Covert Township, the City of South Haven, and South Haven Township. And we talked about how to make sure we protect our coastline and with zoning, et cetera. So, South Haven City was well seeded in that they already had been planning for a long time and had good planning. So that was good. The Van Buren County Commissioners approved a request for $50,000 match to IMDART, which is the Michigan Department of Rural Readiness. The grant funds a residential target market analysis, and the study will help with a countywide housing strategic plan. The municipalities can also buy into the analysis in case you wanted to have a deeper dive, although some cities and township already have done housing studies. Also, Michigan, Southwest Michigan Planning Commission has done studies. Their studies were more than just Van Buren County, include CAS and Biren. And so this, we hope, will give us more information and be of help to the municipalities. I was able to attend a Be Smart for Kids presentation, and it stressed securing firearms, storing the firearms protects the entire family. I'd like to just mention a quote from the presentation. Gun violence is a leading cause of death for kids in the United States. The best way to be sure your kids can't access firearms is to store them securely. I know in my family, my dad had his rifles and guns up in his closet, hidden in the back where all the kids would find them. They didn't have the bullets with it, which is very good. But I think a lot of parents feel, oh, let me just put this away and know what, the kids won't find it. But somehow, they love to try to find weapons. So, this organization, besmartforkids.org, is really trying to get the word out that you need to put them in a lockbox and the keys somewhere separate. Also, it prevents suicide attempts. And firearms have been used in the past for a lot of suicide attempts. And so if you have someone in the family who's considering that, make sure you store those guns. I know at the presentation, there was a couple who mentioned that something tragic had happened in their family with a gun that was unsecure. In my family, one of my nephews went over to visit a friend, and the friend was just there with my nephew, little kid's about 10 years old. And the friends said, look what I have found. And then bing, bang, and shot my nephew dead. So, it is very important to secure your firearms before something happens. It's a nonpartisan group, so I think that's important. Tomorrow, August 22nd, the 2023-24 county budget will be reviewed at the COW Committee of the Hold. It will be presented by our county administrator, John Fall, and our county finance director, Lorna Nenciani. As of August 17th, the general fund budget is balanced, the revenues equal the expenditures, and the revenues are approximately $27,265,000. And the fund balance is very healthy, 29.8%, which is about $8,128,000. It's not a big change in the budget from this year to our next year. So, we'll be discussing that tomorrow. It needs to be passed, I think, by September 22nd, and after it's passed, I'll bring back more information. Tomorrow, we also hope to get an update from Chris Shire from DCS Technology concerning the Michigan High-Speed Internet Office and the Robin Program, which is realizing opportunity with broadband infrastructure networks. So far, if the Robin Program goes as we hope, 92% of the homes in Van Buren County that currently lack access to high-speed internet will receive internet fiber. And Michigan, let's see, Midwest Energy and Communications, who applied for the Robin Grant, they plan to begin in the fall of this year, which is soon, and end in 2026. And I just wanted to give a flyer to your city manager on secure, be smart, secure your weapons. Also, I'm not sure if your city manager received the new Brownfield incentives for housing development from Fishback? Yes, the legislature has realized housing is a big issue, and not just in Michigan, but many other states. And they are changing some of the rules for Brownfield redevelopment. Also, and 2023 Household Recycling Event, the next one will be October 14th, 9:00 to 2:00 p.m. at the BBISD in Lawrence. And that's all I have for you today. Do you have any questions?
I don't. Anybody else?
Okay.
Nothing. Thank you, Gail. Appreciate it. All right. That takes us to the approval of the agenda. Make motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Motion, second. Any discussion or questions? CNN, all's in favor, say aye. Aye. No, it is approved. That takes us down to public comments for items on the agenda, excluding items which are going to be open for public hearing. So if you have an item that's on the agenda you'd like to discuss, just come on up, state your name, address, and you'll have up to five minutes. And again, these are not public hearing items. Good evening, Dan.
Dan Agnello, 964 Everett Parkway. I'd like to publicly first thank all the sponsors we had for the Veterans Fishing Trip we do every year. We had 50 sponsors. I mean, I think we had more than even the Blueberry Festival, but the veterans really enjoy it. We have a dinner afterwards, we have coffee and donuts at 5:00 in the morning, we assign the vets, we take them out fishing, and have a big meal for them. They have a great time and really appreciate it. So, I want to thank the sponsor. I published it on Facebook, so there was a list of sponsors. But, and I'd also like to say about STRs, it's good to see it's finally on the agenda. There's a lot of things that are being considered, but the biggest item that we've talked about for a long time is enforcement, enforcement, enforcement. We have the ordinances, we just have to enforce them. There's things that are made up about renewals, you know, they're not doing the grandfather for use clause correctly. You've all seen a bunch of emails to that effect, I'm not going to get into too much detail about that. But I would urge the council to do something before January 31st. We all know what that date is, right? That's the date that you have to have your application in for any new use STRs. And that includes any of them that lost, that have not applied for over a year. So, if it doesn't get done, it's going to be three years, and we haven't done anything, okay? Also, I'd like to talk about the Hale Building Project. It's coming up on September 7th at the Planning Commission meeting. It's actually a formal notice meeting now, before, just a preliminary meeting. And there were a lot of comments made at that preliminary meeting, but the package that was submitted is exactly the same as what they had before. And it was discussed by staff that, oh, we should really consider allowing them to have a five-story building because we're going to get some intangibles. Well, the only tangible that I heard about was public restrooms there and the walkway to go between Center Street and Quaker underneath the building between the existing New Holland Distillery and one of the building there. And whether they have five stories or four stories, that walkway is still going to be there. So I don't see any tangibles that we're going to get for giving them a five-story building. Remember, like I mentioned before, Fifth Third Bank tried to get a four-story, 50-foot building in there, and they got shot down because the downtown development ordinance says 45 feet, three and a half stories, okay? And we finally got the story thing straightened out for housing, okay? Two and a half stories, 35 feet. So, they're going to talk about having different faces on the building and stuff to make it look like it's not five stories, but, you know, the ordinance is 45 feet. That's it. 62 feet is what they're going to propose right now. 62 feet is still 62 feet. And it doesn't include 10 feet for HVAC units and for your elevator penthouses, okay?
Hey, Dan, do me a favor. That's not on the agenda.
What's that?
STRs is on, not Hales.
I understand. What did you say? I'm talking about Hale.
This is items on the agenda, and Hales isn't on our agenda tonight.
Well, it has to be on the agenda? Okay. Oh, all right. Never mind.
You got it. Thank you. Sorry, I started on one, I was, sorry. But, all right. Anybody else for items on the agenda? Good evening.
I'm Lisa Crupiers, 561 Indiana Avenue. There were a couple stunning revelations at the city council meeting two weeks ago, and this may seem like it's not on the agenda, but I'm getting to, it is relevant, I'm just doing it in a storytelling form. Stunning revelations at the city council meeting two weeks ago, but the life situation shared by Fatima Tucker about her home at 1051 Phoenix Street, which is in Ward II. She owns the home with Ryan Phillippe. That was devastating and sadly unfortunate. Another big bundle, big bungle by the city, the alternate reality of the grossly mismanaged short-term rental program here at South Haven. We all know that new business short-term rental certificates have been issued after the maximum allotment was reached. The 1051 Phoenix case is when a business short-term rental certificate should have been issued, and I do not advocate bending the rules for special situations. I'm a retired teacher. I'm all about following the rules and the guidelines. These people are residents of South Haven. I believe they are even providing housing for one of our teachers, as well as having children who are students in our schools. My gosh, God help us. Can't this case be handled with a little compassion? Especially after they allegedly followed all the rules and did all the right things with everything they did to the house they purchased. It may be too late to issue a business short-term rental certificate to this couple. It sounds like they wanted it for this rental season. Their house is currently on the market to sell. The opportunity to make money has passed, and we may lose them as residents anyhow. If I can register one preference for any future reorganization of the short-term rental program, it is this. Registered voting residents of South Haven be given first priority when business short-term rental certificates are issued, or if general short-term rental certificates, if the differentiation is no longer made, then residents get first priority to whatever is agreed upon. Second-in priority would be Michigan residents, so profits made will at least stay in our state. Last priority would go to out-of-state property owners. We all know their profits go back to wherever they live. Of course, this is not the way the short-term rental certificates are prioritized now, but it could be the new rule as attrition occurs. And lastly, please revisit Fatima and Ryan's case at 1051 Phoenix to see if this can be made right. We can't lose more residents, and especially families.
Thank you for your comments. Appreciate it. Is there anybody else? Good evening.
David Veenstra, 1220 Monroe Boulevard. And I just wanted to comment on the item on the agenda for STRs. I won't belabor the points. I have spoken many times over the last year. I would just say one thing I do want to make clear to anyone listening is that I'm not against all STRs. I do think we can find a balance, but I would like to see the city finally, and we've been talking about this so long, tonight move in the direction of taking bold action on protecting our neighborhoods, which I see as slipping when I look at my neighborhood around me. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Annie.
Good evening. Annie Brown, 114 Michigan Avenue, and I'm running for mayor. Over the last seven months, I've talked to more than 1,000 voters about short-term rentals. The majority of people, including short-term rental owners and business owners, support a cap on the existing number of STRs. For the last few years, our community has been divided regarding short-term rentals. One side says they prevent this and do that. The other side says they provide this and do that. This division and divisiveness have broken friendships and changed our neighborhoods. It's time we discuss short-term rentals with a new attitude. We have to include them in our plan to expand affordable housing and to increase good-paying jobs. Last week, I was invited to visit the Lake Michigan Linen Service. Oh, I thought it was me, I'm sorry. They invited me to tour their business. The Linen Service provides clean sheets and towels to short-term rentals and other lodgings in our city. They opened in April and have created 13 jobs. They add one new client every week, and they are outgrowing their office space in our city limits for the second time. This week, two students from Hartford Schools transferred to South Haven Public Schools because their dad has a new job as a maintenance man for a short-term rental business. They're moving here and buying a home. These are two positive examples of what short-term rentals do for South Haven. Yes, there are negative experiences that we've all heard here in City Hall and on social media. I want to hear and share both sides. I do not want to invalidate anyone's experience. I want to include everyone. Short-term rentals are here to stay, and let's use them to our city's benefit. Everyone should grab a chair and bring it up to the table and find a good solution. Thank you.
Thanks for your comments. Anybody else? Good evening, Bishop.
811 Indiana Street. Good evening. The harsh reality of this whole thing is that short-term rental has caused hardship for a lot of people. And I would never stand here and advocate making exceptions to help, although I feel for those that are going through and struggling, that there are struggling people throughout this whole community. And there are individuals that are outplaced, don't have homes to stay in, that I don't think the council is coming up with a solution to help them as well. So, although I feel for those that are impacted by not being able to capitalize on short-term rentals, this whole issue with short-term rentals being, to me, in my opinion, out of control, not managed well, and I don't think a lot of people in the community know what they were really intended to do, the true purpose of personal or business. I think, I think that in reality, what they were ordinance and was served, written- I think, I think that, in reality, the, what they were ordinance and was served, written to do in the first place is not being, it's not being ran in that order in which it was originally intended to do. So, in my opinion, we have an abuse of the program on both sides, and people are being hurt on both sides, but I don't advocate for making exceptions for anybody that comes in front of this council and gives a story of a hardship, because I hear all kinds of hardships. And unless you're willing to help everybody that is facing these type of hardships in this city, then we need to keep that in mind. And I believe, and I don't know much about individual, but I'm almost sure if you own a house in South Haven, if you own a house in South Haven, I would, if I was a betting person, and I'm not a betting person, but I would put money on that you probably making more than what you pay for. If you sell your house, you're probably going to sell it at a profit right now. And so, I don't know how much that hardship is, and I don't want to speak on it, but I just think that when we talk about hardship and we come before the council to express that type of hardship, we must keep in mind that everybody, there's a lot of people that are suffering hardship, looking for homes and can't. Teachers that'll love to stay here that can't. Firefighters, police officers, a lot of people that would love to stay and be a part of this community who can't. And so, the real issue is it's trying to strike a balance, because there is hardship. And I, you know, we can sit here and say what STRs are doing for this community. We can say STRs are bringing so much into this community, and the truth, the reality of it is that it's not, it's not helping everybody. It may be helping some people, but it's not helping everybody. And so, I just wanted to say that, keep that in mind. And I don't, I don't disagree with what Lisa said totally, but I just said, you know, if we're going to advocate for those type of hardships, let's advocate for everybody. I've stood here plenty of times saying that there's a mass gentrification going on in the south side of Ward One, and being a pastor, I can see it, because those families that used to sit in the pews are no longer in the pews anymore. Kalamazoo has become a baby South Haven because most of the people of color have been priced out there in Kalamazoo. They've been forced to move down south. And I don't hear a lot of people standing up here and saying that there is a mass gentrification going on. So, keep that in mind when we advocate for helping people with hardship. There are hardships across the board that we must look at as well.
Very good. Thank you. Was there anybody else? Evening, Todd.
Todd Heinrich, 357 Moore Court. Almost nobody knows where that is. It's about 200 yards way over there, named after the same Elsie Moore that our high school building is named after.
Nice trigger there.
Apparently quite an amazing man. I've learned a lot about him. I'm here to talk about your agenda item about short-term rentals. It's a difficult subject. You'll hear, you know, opinions all over the place. I wanted to remind you of something that was, the staff presented to you a couple of months ago. You asked them to produce a average or get general information about how many short-term rentals were in other lakefront communities up and down the coast. They included New Buffalo, St. Joseph, South Haven, Sagatuck, Muskegon, Luddington, Traverse City, and Petoskey. I could read these all out to you, but suffice it to say, they range from Traverse City, which allows one for every 120, but none are allowed in residential areas. Petoskey has one in every 110, for every 110 housing units. I'm sorry, these are, these are how many there are for housing units. A couple that weren't mentioned was Park Township, which recently, which has, currently has 240. As of January 1st, there will not be any more short-term rentals allowed in Park Township. Some of them have been there for 30 and 40 years. It's not impossible to change laws. I wouldn't recommend that we do what Park Township does, but if the folks that tell you that we can't change this, you know, need to think hard about that. The average of those, those communities that I just mentioned are one in every, one, a short-term rental is allowed for every 60 housing units in those communities. So when you hear people talk about, well, I have to have it, I can't, you know, your neighborhoods need neighbor people, they're suggesting crazy ideas, it's not crazy what's being suggested. If we cut it in half, we'd still have one in 30, or one, sorry, one in eight, or wait, one in 10, depending on whether you use one-fourth or one-fifth. It's the way it's written. Please keep these things in mind as you think about these things, pray about them. It's, it's not a tough situation that you're in. I mean, it is a tough situation that you're in, and I don't envy you're, you're having to do this, but it's, we're, we're way outside of what is considered to be good practice for a diverse community. Unless we want to just be a tourist town, and that's all we are, we have to have housing for business owners, business professionals, and we need housing for everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Anybody else? Twice. Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Susan.
Pull that mic down.
I'm too short. I'm Susan Peterson. I live at 270 Park Avenue on the north side. I bought my home in 1995. My whole plan was to retire here and then rent my home as subsequent income because I'm a retired OR nurse. So I fought for my personal right to rent, but I do think there is such a thing as too much of a good thing, and I do think we need some balance. Our area does seem to be saturated. I just vacationed in the New Buffalo area, and they do include condos, and they do include homeowner associations in their numbers. They are at their limit and waiting list to apply. Also, I thought of, kind of outside the box, I used to belong to the yacht club, and there was a point system for things that were considered when you wanted a slip. How long had you been a yacht club member? How long had you been a resident in South Haven? And I think we could do that with certificates, because you could earn more points, and it would prevent, you know, what some people complain as newcomers coming in and just renting, as opposed to someone like me who has lived here of 27 years, retired here, and I want to be able to rent to keep my home. So I think that there's many considerations. It's complicated. I don't know how you make those rules, but I do, I'm all about rules. So I do want more rules. I do, the market is saturated. Even I, when I get on Airbnb or VRBO, I'm drowning in South Haven rentals. So I don't want to drown in our rentals, but I want, I want to be able to rent, and I do think that if you're in the city limits, that you don't get a get out of jail free card, that the rules apply to who's in the city limits. Just makes sense to me. That's all.
Sounds good. Thanks for your comments. Appreciate it. Some good ideas. Was there anybody else? Going once, going twice. That takes us to the consent agenda items, A through E.
I make a motion to approve consent agenda items, A through E.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? Nothing. This is a roll call.
Arnold.
Yes.
Onuki.
Yes.
Reser.
Yes.
Schlag.
Yes.
Sleeper.
Yes.
Wilkins.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes. That takes us to old business. City Council be asked to take the following actions regarding a proposed ordinance to amend Section 10-51 and 10-52 of the Code of Ordinances to update our current flood insurance rate map. So first, we're going to hold a public hearing.
I make a motion to open the public hearing.
Second.
Motion is second to open a public hearing. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
It is open. And Bill's going to talk about flood planes. Good evening.
Good evening, Your Honor, City Council. In front of City Council, today's amendment to the ordinance. It's been a little bit, actually, that FEMA's been updating the flood insurance maps, and these are the results of that. We were notified by FEMA that our, our, our community actually were a part of that, so we have to pass this. And so, Nick helped draft the ordinance, and there was a lot of exchange. It was very precise. We had to do a draft to the, to the state, and there was, must have been about four iterations. They were very particular. So, but in front of City Council is exactly what the, the state would like us to see passed, so.
Questions? Actually, is there any questions before he goes on? Go ahead and ask in the public, because the public landed the same question. Go ahead. You can ask.
Oh, sorry. In, in the packet from this weekend, from the last meeting that I was absent from, I don't see any maps or the rates in our packet.
Oh, no, there, there was no maps in the original one either. I, I can get maps. The maps went through, actually, a review process with the, with the state, but I can provide that.
Well, you're asking us to upvote and update on an ordinance for those maps, though, correct?
Yeah, they referenced the maps in there, correct.
With new rates?
Not new rates, actually, just the maps adjusting, actually, the flood boundaries and stuff, Steve.
How can I vote on this without seeing the new maps?
I can, but it's going to be a huge, it'll be a huge packet. I can provide that if you want.
I think it would be important for us all to see it before we vote on it.
Okay.
My opinion.
Hold that thought. Let's go to public. Any public questions or comments? See none?
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion is second to close the public hearing. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
It is closed. So, next we'll be asked to consider the adoption of the ordinance to amend Section 38-30 of the Code of Ordinances to review, no, wait a minute, sorry.
Yep, I did the same thing.
Wait a minute here, sorry. I ain't that thought. Next, we're going to be considering the adoption of an ordinance to amend Section 10 of the South Haven Code of Ordinances to update our flood insurance rate maps.
I'll make a motion to adopt the ordinance to amend Section 10 of the South Haven Code of Ordinances to update our flood insurance rate maps.
I'll second.
All right, motion is second. So, want to go on? I mean, I guess I'm, it's a play map, I'm not.
Yeah, we have actually till November 16th, 2023, to approve it, so I guess we do have some time. I can provide the maps, but the maps went through a public review process already with the, with the state, but I can provide that to City Council.
As long as you provide it, I guess, it's not going to change my vote. I don't, I'm not an expert on flood planes.
Did the boundaries change from this last high-water event?
Actually, the only thing that we could actually see, Steve, was actually by the wastewater plant itself, and we know that was actually always flooding the issue that we've always had there, and we're going to be addressing, mitigating that through a grant we just received. That was the only thing we could see is over by the wastewater plant. Nothing else, really, is the only boundary we've seen that changed.
I, I think if the state is okay with the maps, I'm okay with the ordinance as, as written.
Yeah, that's mine. And if state's reviewed it and you've reviewed it, that's why we've got you. So, I'm good with that. Any other discussion? If not, we've got a motion and a second to adopt the ordinance. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no.
No.
All right. Next one. City Council be asked to take the following actions regarding the revision of the Harbor Commission's jurisdiction. So on this one, again, we're going to open a public hearing.
Make a motion to open the public hearing.
Second.
Motion is second, open a public hearing. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. It's open. Griffin, in the House. Two items we're asked to consider tonight.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So what we have back before you all are some proposed changes to both the Code of Ordinances and the zoning ordinances pertaining to the site plan applications and review of projects on waterfront lots. The short background is that presently, the Harbor Commission's charged with reviewing all plans for projects on waterfront lots that are required to go to the Planning Commission. This can be everything from large projects, such as the Maritime Museum or Gull Lake Marine, to the installation of pools, hot tubs, decks, bluff stairs, et cetera. Members of the Harbor Commission over the last year had started to question whether reviewing some of those smaller projects, such as pools and hot tubs and decks and stairs, was a good use of their time, especially since the Harbor Commission's site plan review standards primarily are geared towards ensuring safe navigability of the waterway. So to address those concerns, staff worked with the city attorney to prepare the ordinance amendments that are before you all this evening. What they would do would clarify the types of projects that the Harbor Commission would review and transition some of the waterfront lot regulations from the Code of Ordinances to a more appropriate place in the zoning ordinance. This was recommended by both the Harbor Commission to the Planning Commission, and then the Planning Commission to City Council. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Pretty clear. How about public questions or comments before we get our questions done this one? Nothing.
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion is second to close the public hearing. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
It is closed. All right, so, so we have two to take. Would you like them together? Would you like them separate? I could roll them together.
You're the mayor.
Griffin, does it matter to you? I'll read them both. First, we want to consider the adoption of an ordinance to amend Section 38-30 of the Code of Ordinances to revise the Harbor Commission's jurisdiction to review site plan applications pertaining to waterfront lots, sorry. And then also to consider the adoption of an ordinance to amend Sections 1401 and 1724 of the South Haven zoning ordinance to revise the Harbor Commission's jurisdiction to review site plan applications pertaining to waterfront lots.
Make a motion to approve Section 38-30 of the Code of Ordinances to revise the Harbor Commission jurisdiction to review site plan applications pertaining to waterfront lots.
Second.
All right, take the first one first. We'll do it. Got it. So, discussion. Pretty clear? Pretty clear? All right. Motion is second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Oppose.
Make a motion to approve Sections 1401 and 1724 of the South Haven zoning ordinances to revise the Harbor Commission jurisdiction to review site plan applications pertaining to waterfront lots.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion on this one? It's so quiet tonight. All right. Motion is second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. All right. City Council be asked to consider the following action, actions regarding an industrial facilities' tax exemption application from Fine Chemical Manufacturing Services, which does business as WR Grace for its property at 1421 Kalamazoo Street. And on this one, again, we're going to open a public hearing.
I make a motion to open the public hearing.
Second.
Motion is second, open a public hearing. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. It is open. Good evening, Griffin.
Good evening again. So what we have back before you all is an IFT application associated with WR Grace for its property at 1421 Kalamazoo Street. As many of you all are aware, they have an ongoing construction project going on, on their property. They're looking to invest approximately $30 million into the community, which is, which is just an amazing thing. And one of the tools that our organization has to support investment like this is IFTs. So specifically, what's before you is an IFT application for exemption for real property improvements consisting of the construction of a three-story building to accommodate an 800-millimeter centrifuge, as well as a warehouse to accommodate work-in-progress materials. It's expected that this project will produce 20 new jobs within two years, as well as retain the 182 existing jobs at the facility. This is one of the largest employers we have in town. To see them doing well and continuing to invest and reinvest in their facility is, is a great thing. So what we have before you all is the application and the associated clawback agreement that we use in similar situations like this, and are recommending approval this evening.
This is a very exciting project. I mean, they're doing $30 million of work out there, but 13 million, which will be in part of the IFT, is for the real property. We're not including the personal property. That's got some tax implications for the city, so we're just focusing on the 13 million, I'm sorry, the over 13 million in real property. Again, as Griffin said, this is a very exciting project, seeing this kind of expansion in our industrial zones. These are high-paying jobs. These are skilled, and if not very learned. And if not, um, um, very learned, um, jobs here with all the different chemical applications here. So very exciting work.
Agreed. All right, so this public comment part. Any public questions or comments on this part? Just come on up, state your name and address, and ask away.
Dan Agnello, nine sixty-four, Everett Parkway. I'd like just to confirm or prove what, what staff has to say. Abermarley, when Grace took over Abermarley, they've done nothing but expand and create jobs. And I would be in favor of giving them the tax exemptions. I don't see any problem with it. Thanks.
Agreed. Thank you. Anybody else? Nothing. Close the public hearing?
I make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion second to close the public hearing. All those in favor say aye.
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 It is closed. All right, so next, we'll be asked to consider a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-three dash twenty-six, which is a resolution approving an application from Fine Chemical Manufacturing Services LLC for an industrial facilities exemption certificate for real property improvements only.
Make a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-three dash twenty-six. A resolution from, uh, Fine Chemical for an industrial facilities exemption certificate.
Second. All right, motion second. I will give a shout out to Kate and Griffin because one of the many fun things we get to do is we get to go out and visit businesses. They were well on their way to doing this expansion, and both Griffin and Kate were quick to point out that they hadn't turned in their paperwork yet to get more money. So, there's one thing that a lot of, you know, a lot of states to the south of our current state did for many years is they, you know, lured a lot of businesses away by available tax incentives. And these exist and good for, you know, these guys are on the spot out there talking to these businesses as we do on a regular basis. So, very helpful, and they were quite pleased to hear that there was money available, which means they can spend more money, they can bring more jobs, and they can do what they're doing very well, which is their job. So, kudos to both of you. So thank you for bringing it up. So, and I'm just excited they're expanding. I drive by there all the time, and I see big centrifugey-looking things that are lifting up and down. I don't know what it is, but it looks cool. So, they're building. So, anything else? Questions, comments? We got a motion, we got a second to approve this I F T. All those in favor say aye.
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 Oppose, no. But it is approved. Thanks again, Griff. All right, next, fun stuff. We have new business, which city council be asked to approve special event application twenty twenty-three dash thirty-eight, which is a South Haven High School Homecoming Parade twenty twenty-three, which will be held on September the twenty-second, twenty twenty-three, from five-thirty P M until six P M, which lineup starts at five P M, to begin at the corner of Kalamazoo Street and Huron Street, down Phoenix Street and ending at Ratcliffe Field.
Make a motion to approve special event application twenty twenty-three dash thirty-eight, South Haven High School Homecoming Parade twenty twenty-three, to be held on September twenty-second, twenty twenty-three, five-thirty-six.
Second.
All right, motion second. This is in well ahead of last year. I think we had it the week before. I'm just saying, this is a record. This is like, early.
I, I might have scolded him.
I was like, is it homecoming next week? So I know it. We're early. Okay. Questions, comments? Kate, anything about a parade and homecoming?
We're very happy to have this in well in, in advance of the, of the event. They're looking to have a marching band choir floats, community groups, walking participants. And again, they'll be starting on Kalamazoo Street, lining up at five P M, right next to the bathrooms there, on, on Huron, Huron and Kalamazoo, then going down Phoenix to Ratcliffe, um, I'm sorry, on Hubbard to Ratcliffe Field. So, once again, it's an annual event. I'm happy to see that they got this in.
I would add that I always remind people, the street, street won't be closed for very long, just as long as it takes the folks to march. And if you know Mr. Bop, the ba- the band always steps off on time, so it'll start sharply at five-thirty.
Like it. Very good. All right. We've got a motion, we've got a second. If there's no other discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. It is approved. And next, city council, we're going to discuss some topics regarding our short-term rental ordinances and give, uh, staff direction. We don't, this isn't going to be a vote. We're looking for some thumbs up, thumbs down to give Kate direction. There are other topics that are not here. So, we've discussed everything from rental inspection frequency to parking in the, you know, downtown parking. There's other things. These are just some of the ones that we're looking for some clarity that staff's trying to get us to at least, enough so they can draft something, if that makes sense. So, Kate, on that note, I will turn it over to you and walk us through this.
Well, thank you. As you know, we've had our different workshops. We've had some education, and then we've also talked about them at a high level. And as I've talked to individual, uh, members of council, I'm getting some, I'm getting feedback, I'm not, but I'm not seeing a clear majority. So that's really hard for us to start drafting something and bring back to council without knowing exactly where you all want to go. So that's what I'm looking for tonight, is to cover, cover some of these topics that have been put in the staff report and just to get some thumbs up, thumbs down, and really get some guidance as to where you'd like to be. And I know that maybe getting a seven-o vote on any one thing might not happen, but I guess I'm looking for majority so that we know where to go. And because Attorney Curcio will be drafting, and we'll be, we'll be working on this, we'll bring back what we, what we come up with so you can review. And then if that passes the muster test, then we would send that off to Planning Commission. So to get this started, one of the first topics, and I think is the easiest one, um, well, it's, it sets the, it sets everything else up, is, which is, do you want a fixed cap or do you want a floating cap? And as we talked about, a fixed cap is you setting a number versus a floating cap where you have to determine how that would move. Currently, our floating cap is a one-to-four ratio, which is twenty percent of housing, uh, units that are, and some of those have been taken out. If you wanted a fixed cap, and I think that, um, I've heard some numbers, um, you know, Mr. Reeser had a number, but either way, it'd be setting a number, and then that's where the cap would be, until you reach that cap coming down, if it's lower than what we have currently, or versus if you want to set it higher than what we have, either we could, you know, that's the options is, where do you, the other option is if you want a fixed cap or you want a floating cap, we'll get to, do you have an idea what that number is? So I guess the quickest way to ask is, does anyone want a fixed or a floating cap? And it might be best to maybe go down the line?
Yeah, we're going to go down. Then do you want to answer the other, I mean, there are a couple of questions related, like you want to know as far as the concept of attrition. Is it, is that a hard number, or if they lapse, are they renewable? Do you want to have, was it both those answered? Or do you want to go through that as a separate question?
I think we go, go through that separate. It might determine if you even need to deal with that. If you have a floating cap, it may not be.
Okay, that's fair. And I'm trying to think, anything else? Oh, let's just go there. Sorry. So how about, I'll start on, I, let's go to left. How's that? So, any thoughts? Fixed versus floating?
Fixed.
Okay. You're looking for a number at this point in time, or just fixed?
Not yet. We can come back around.
Fixed. Okay, got it.
Uh, floating as-is.
I'd support a fixed for both business and personal.
I'm flexible, but I'd be willing to go to fixed.
I'd like fixed.
I kind of like, uh, floating right now, but if, if I could support a fixed number, it all kind of depends on the, on the number.
I agree with that.
Fixed.
Okay, thank you. So it gives me five fixed right there. Um, and I've got some floating as-is, and then I've got floating, uh, but could, could support fixed depending on the number. So with that being said, um, is there an idea of where you'd like to land with the number? So currently, if I can give you a quick, from around where we are currently and checking with our S T R department, we have issued four ninety-seven of the non-exempt business permits. And I guess I should also clarify, I heard a comment earlier that, you know, we have issued more than the forty-eight that were allowed this year, and that's absolutely unequivocally incorrect. We have only issued the forty-eight that we were allowed to in the non-exempt areas. Under the, I'm sorry, the non-exempt category. Now, we may have issued other business permits that are part of the condos or one of the four exempted P U Ds. You will, you can see that still going on because those are not part of our current cap. We also may issue personal units, so if you're seeing people get permits, they may be a personal, whether they're in exempt area or a non-exempt. Those are uncapped. The only capping that we have right now is the one-to-four ratio that is in, um, the traditional neighborhoods, pretty much your residential areas that are not in an exempted area, such as the condos or the four P U Ds or personals. So we do currently have four ninety-seven in that number. So is there a number that anyone in council wants to throw out? Is there a number that you're thinking of?
Have a number?
I...
Go up and down?
Oh, sure.
Doesn't matter. Which one? I'll go to the right.
So to answer that question, uh, you gotta say, you gotta, you gotta make a couple of statements, and I'm going to say them. First of all, there's a lot of different opinions in this town. I went to hundreds of houses. I'm running for mayor, as Annie did. We both talked to many people. There's four people in this room that went to houses with me, and they can attest to what I'm going to say. Residents have said a couple of things overwhelmingly. One, they want this issue behind them. They want us to make a decision. They want it now. Very few residents, very few, have said that they think there should be no short-term rentals in this town. Almost all of them said they're here, they're here to stay, they help tourism, they help our businesses. The issue that comes up repeatedly, and again, there's four people here contested this, repeatedly, the, the residents said they want a balance and they want us to compromise. There is not going to be any one winner on this and one loser, and that, that's one of the issues. We have to be, we have to be somewhere in the middle on this thing. So when you ask for the number, regardless of the number, I think we need to freeze it where it's at now. Whatever that number is, that you know you have the right number, and I go by your number, but whatever that is, let's look at it by type of short-term rental. So if we're talking about the business exempt, excuse me, the non-exempt business, and that's the one where we have the most issue. Those we should freeze. Repeatedly, residents said, we have enough in this town. Now, I'm not trying to hurt the short-term rental people. I've met with two realtors, and we set about freezing them. Both of those could agree to that. But don't take it down, don't increase it, freeze it where it's at. The next issue that you brought up on the phone, I think you're alluding to it now, if we freeze it, then what do we do six months, a month, a day from now if someone doesn't want to renew their short-term rental? If a new person buys the home, that short-term rental stays with the property, as I understand it. The next person has the right to take that license. I'm not suggesting we take license away from anyone. But if that new buyer doesn't want that license, and let's pick the number, I think you said four ninety-seven, if they don't take that license, that permit, and that permit goes away, and that way, the next number is four ninety-six or whatever that next lower number is. So it's only through attrition, through the natural reneging on wanting that permit, that the number will go down. So again, no realtor, no short-term rental owner will be hurt, but the number will go down if someone doesn't renew it. So that number will fluctuate on its way down.
So what's your number?
My opinion.
I think, staff, we need a number. I think the question is, what's our number?
So the number we're at now is what?
All right, so right now, we're looking at four ninety-seven.
So that's the number we should start with, if we're going to freeze it. Let's start with it. My opinion.
Okay.
Just my opinion, a lot of residents. That's the number we should freeze right now.
Okay.
What's the end number?
Just to clarify, the impression I get is you're saying that as the, as, as people give up their short-term rental certificate, then you expect that number to go down? Is that what you're saying?
If they give it up and the buyer, I think you were saying, the buyer doesn't want the certificate, then that certificate goes away and the number goes down. Because one of the things...
So that's, that's not a fixed number then?
What's the number?
We start with a fixed number, but that number will only fluctuate if someone doesn't renew the permit. So in that way, it's a fixed number. The, the ratio, the problem with that, it's, it's, it's a bouncing ball. If you build five more houses, you have another short-term rental. If someone builds twenty houses, you have five more short-term rentals. It's slowly gone up. What I've heard from resident after resident, they can live with what we have now, but they don't want it to continue to go up. They want it to go through, down through attrition, and that's the fairest way of doing it. We don't hurt anyone that has a license. We don't hurt a realtor. We don't hurt a business person. And it just, and it does move. It moves down through attrition.
So what's the, what's the end result, the end goal of number that you're thinking of? I think that's what Kate's trying to...
Yeah, that's the number we need to hear.
Glad you asked it. I think it's an unfair question. I'm not looking for it to be two hundred and fifty, and I'm not looking for it to be five hundred. I believe the community wants less than we have now and do it very fair. Just let it go down by attrition. If someone doesn't want the permit, it goes away.
So to me, that doesn't answer the question because you're not saying what the final number is. It's just going to go down to what? I mean, if it goes down by one, is that good? Or is it gonna, is intent for it to keep going down?
So realistically, George, you know, and we all know, that number will never go to one. Short-term rentals are here. They bring in tourism. They help our community. What people are saying overwhelmingly is we have enough. Some people think we have too many. Some people think we could have more. But most people want a balance and they want to compromise. The compromise is stop it right where it's at, and through attrition, if you don't want the license, it goes away. It does not go into a pool to give it to someone else. So in effect, those who think we have too many, they will get their wishes. It'll go down slowly, and it'll take years. I talked to Griffin. He said it'll take many, many years for that number to go down. I think we all know that. But then the residents who think we have too many are going to be, are going to see some hope that the number's going to go down. The investors who have their life savings in these properties will not get hurt because none of them are going to lose their license. But if it does slowly go down, those who have the licenses, if, if the realtors are telling me accurately, that property value is going to go up because eventually you'll have less licenses, so they'll go up. But we got to get a better balance. And when people talk about how many we have in this town, it's more than almost any four towns along the coast. It's the fairest, easiest way to do it. I know you want to get going.
Yep, let's go. So you don't have a, you don't have a number in mind. You have the current number, but you have a bottom number.
The number I want to start with is the number we're at, and freeze it.
But you don't have a lower number in mind. That's what we're, I mean, let's go on to, got it. George?
All right. Uh, so I mean, this kind of gets into whether or not we're going to put a cap on the personal short-term rentals, but for the business, non-exempt, short-term rentals, I would be happy with a cap of five hundred.
And that's just, that's the number, now, I guess, we already went to the question, we're already kind of going there, so let's just go there. They would, if there was, if they were to turn it in, it would be available for the next person?
The way I envision it, if you, if the number of business, non-exempt, short-term rentals goes below the cap, which I'm proposing five hundred, then there would be available business, non-exempt, short-term rentals available, and staff would have to come up with a process of, uh, of giving those out.
So if I'm hearing you right, George, your cap would be at five hundred for the non-exempt business permits? And that if, for some reason, like, let's say, permit number four hundred was either voluntarily abandoned or was revoked, you would say that permit could be reissued, so it is not extinguished, correct?
Correct. To, to me, when we're talking about a cap, a cap is what we're saying, we're going to, basically, that's the maximum number we're going to have. And, and that's where it's going to basically be at, and we're not going to, I'm not, I'm not sure, because if you allow it to drift lower, you know, you need a bottom number, in my mind, on how far it's going to drift low. And it's going to take a while. I understand that.
Scott, I think the good thing, that we can have a little dialogue. So if I could just say one word. We talk about the ratio, and that is a moving number, because as we build more, the number can go up. What is wrong with saying, let's freeze it where it's at? And that's a cap. The ratio's a cap, because the cap moves. The cap can move now the other way. If we say, we're going to stick to this number, and if someone doesn't renew their permit, then it goes down. So my cap can go down. Your cap can stay exactly where it's at. But right now, the cap is going up because you can build five homes and have another short-term rental. So I have just, just as much validity, say, it's a cap, but it's going to go down as what we have now, a cap that can go up. Hey, that's the only point I want to make, Scott.
Got it. It's Wendy.
Um, well, so personally, I would love to see the number super low. I mean, like fifty to a hundred low, but I don't see that being a very realistic goal at this point. So for me, finding somewhere in between what we have now, what I think would be optimal for our residents. I know we're saying to do a fixed number, but right now it's about ten percent. And I feel like closer, or it's at twenty percent. I feel like closer to the ten percent range would be better, which would put us at about two fifty. That's almost half of what we have now. So I guess that would be my...
That's your, that's your fixed number?
Yeah.
All right.
Keep coming down. Keep coming down.
Business short-term rentals, fixed number 497.
And I guess I didn't propose this to Wendy, but Wendy, would you freeze or extinguish the right to reissue?
Um, yeah, I think if there's a way to, when the house is sold, or if it lapses without being renewed, then through attrition, take those permits out of circulation until it gets to the number we want.
Okay, so let's say it gets down to 250, which is your number, and we go to 249, would you reissue a permit to get back to 250?
Yeah.
I see, okay. On Jeff, and that's my other, that's my question to you, would you freeze or extinguish?
And I don't want to get too off in the weeds. Like Mr. Agnello said, I'm also very concerned about enforcement, and so I would like our enforcement to have some real teeth, and so that we can revoke if people abuse, and I'm thinking ahead to personal short-term rentals, but I don't, we're not talking about that yet. So I would like the way to draw it down, so that we can, you know, enforcement. But if someone, I'm trying to think, if the house turns over, the new person gets it, and we do have the license available, then yeah, I'd be fine with them reissuing. Yeah.
Okay, so you would reissue if you're below, below the cap?
Yep, for below the cap.
Steve?
My turn.
Absolutely.
So if, if I have to answer, and if we go with a fixed cap and that vote goes through, I would be with, with George and Joe, the 497 or 500, but I wouldn't, I would want them to be able to be reissued. And something hit me pretty hard during the comments earlier, the lady mentioned that she fought for her right to rent her house. And, and I think if I go with a fixed cap, but reissue if it becomes available, and, maybe we need to look outside the box a little bit on that and say, "Okay, well, maybe Ward 1 or Ward 2 is way over-ratioed." Maybe we can look at the ratio being more level-out. Maybe Ward 3 wants to have more rentals, maybe Ward 1 and 2 is too flooded now. The city, with all the smarts we have, should be able to figure out that ratio in certain areas, or decide where they're able to reissue a permit, if possible. I'd like to see something like that happen, because I think it's a more fair approach to a possible reissue of a permit. So if we end up fixing the cap at a certain amount, whatever that number ends up being voted on, if we end up having a fixed cap, I'd like to be able to have the ratio or the reissue of the permit to somebody else that, that is available, if we want to steer that in a different direction for the city. And maybe, maybe Ward 3 doesn't want anymore. Maybe, maybe we are, I don't know. But I think the communities are different, the histories are different, from ward to ward to ward, very different. So I think maybe there, there might be a great compromise for, for the community to come together with some type of a ratio. You know, maybe in Ward 1 and 2, they don't reissue there for a while, until that attrition comes down to what that neighborhood wants. Maybe Ward 3 wants more, or can take more, maybe they don't. But I think there's got to be a way to, to, to see where that stands, and maybe the whole community can come together then. So, that would be my opinion, does that make sense?
It does. I'm just writing that down. So we want to look at where the permits are issued by Ward, and consider how to allocate any future ones, if you get in that.
For example, if you're at North Beach, okay? And that permit goes away, like somebody wants the permit numbers to go down, and they lose that permit, or they sell the house and, and they lose that permit. That's one area that's probably made for this kind of stuff, if you've ever been on North Shore or by the North Beach. So I'm just saying, look at it through a different angle and from each community. If it comes up before, vote before the end of December, then I'd gladly vote for it that way.
Well, thank you, thank you, Steve.
Can I add on to something Steve said?
Sure.
Because I know in our short-term rental report that we get every year, the, there's a nice map that comes with that report, that kind of has different sections sectioned out-
Yes.
-with percentages, and maybe with like a zoning overlay, or something like that, we could do something where, you know, kind of, some of the more highly concentrated areas could get their percent, of course, you'd have to go back to a ratio then, to try to get that, but that was another idea, kind of what Steve is saying. You know, when we try to set something that's, you know, the same for the entire city, but the city is very diverse, and there's different areas that have different histories and different experiences with short-term rental, so I don't know, that's just another idea I had, and kind of along Steve's lines.
Okay.
I think that I would stay with what the max is right now, and when it falls below, just reissue.
Okay, thank you. Mayor?
I would leave it at 497, and reissue.
Oh, reissue, okay.
And I do like, I mean, we've talked about how to spread them out, so if we could discuss that, that might be a nice solution to move them around a little bit.
I've got five for 497, and Steve, you're kind of 497, 500, but it sounds like we've got some majority to go in 497, and it sounds like I've got five that would not extinguish those permits once you're below the cap. Does that sound about right? Okay. Okay. We can look at those density, or where the, the percentage is by those areas that we have had previously. I think we started that in 2018, just kind of getting an idea about where the short-term rentals are located. I think we have, it's not necessarily done by Ward, but it's almost done by kind of, I wouldn't say neighborhood, but just by a series of, of project areas. So we have those maps, and we can get those updated for you, to see where they're at, if that factors in. We might have to take some more guidance on that. Nick, do you have anything to add on that?
No, that's doable from a drafting perspective.
Is this on? Okay, sorry.
Sorry, no, I think that's doable from a drafting perspective.
Okay, all right. Anything else before we move on to the next topic? Okay. The next one I wanted to talk about was exempt versus non-exempt, and we've talked about this a little bit. Exempt, as you know, is, or if you don't know, as a reminder, these are the areas that are not part of the 497 cap. These are your condos. There's four PUDs, plain unit developments, that are not part of the 1 to 4 ratio, and that's why we call them the exempted. And I've itemized these out as 2A through E, and wanted to know if council, if there was a, like a majority feel here from council of whether or not to combine the exempt and non-exempt, or if we want to just keep them separate as they are? Because right now, these are not in your traditional neighborhoods. As you know, Trailside slash Everett Park, Harbor Club, Maple Gate, or Sherman Hills didn't exist when we were talking about traditional neighborhoods. These were either factories or farmland, so, or other kind of vacant land. So is there any thoughts on whether or not you want condos, Trailside slash Everett Park PUD, Harbor Club PUD, which is on Baseline Road, and Sherman Hills PUD? Again, that's out by the I-196 Business Park. Some, I did have a council member ask about Maple Gate PUD. There's 11 lots there, and I believe that they are all built, and if, I think that we issued a last building permit for there. So there are no more new, anymore, I'm sorry, there, there's no more vacant lots in, in Maple Gate. So that, I'm not sure how folks are thinking about that, but do you want to continue the exempt, non-exempt status?
Can I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
Are the, the PUDs, are those condos?
I really, I believe many of them are site condos, yes. So they would have an HOA.
What's the difference then, when you're trying to separate condos to PUDs?
Well, I guess we treat them somewhat differently, because when we think, when city staff are talking about condos, we're talking about attached condos, as if they're all in the same building or buildings, versus these four PUDs, which would be separate site condos. So they, they appear as, well, just single-family residential, but they're part of a condo system, and ultimately, when they have reached the number of developed lots, then HOA is formed.
So it turns into a condominium?
That's correct, but we do also have others that are in, you know, many con, I'm sorry, PUDs that are part of the 1 to 4 ratio. These four were set aside, I believe in 2018, because they were not seeing a lot of progress in getting built out.
Yeah, I know, is that specifically Trailside and, yeah, so that's, that's the reason. So, I, I know attached condos, I would, I'll kick it off. I mean, you want to do one at a time, or you just want to hear us as a slate? I mean, I'm-
Yeah, well, yeah, all of them.
Attached condos have never been a, you know, having any complaints, concerns. I would leave that one out, leave them as exempt. I don't know if there are any thoughts on that.
You want to go each on, on item A? I would agree, attached condos, they have a condo association, they should be able to regulate and police themselves. I would leave attached condos alone, or as is.
I agree.
I would keep the exempt status just the same for all categories.
For all, oh, for all?
For all, A through E, yep.
Okay.
For B, C, and E, and then, I'm sorry, not everyone has it in front of me, for Trailside, Everett Park, for Harbor Club, and for Sherman Hills, I would say, leave them alone as they are, because the goal, the hope is that the PUD will encourage people to develop those areas. Maple Gate, as you said, is full, so I would say, remove it from exempt status. It doesn't need the PUD protection to encourage building there.
For the caper ratio, you mean?
Yes.
Is that what the question is?
Yep.
Basically, it just gets pulled out. Should be a little easier on staff, too, theoretically, so I would, I would concur with that statement as well, I would pull out Trailside.
Okay.
Or, sorry, Maple Gate, Maple Gate.
Okay.
Yeah, I agree with what everyone's saying. I think the exempt business STRs, the condos and the PUD, should be left to manage themselves, so there should be no restriction. Except if we could consider future PUDs and make decisions on council, whether we want them to be exempt or not. Because hypothetically, in Ward 1, the southern ward, there's a lot of land there, that hypothetically a builder could build 50, 100 homes, make them all, make it the whole thing a PUD, and make them all short-term rentals.
No, that's not correct.
Now, or no?
No, the only places where you continually, you could have more short-term rentals are in these exempted areas. The other places are covered by the cap. So there's, any future PUD would not be, would not be exempted out, only these named PUDs are exempted out of the ratio.
So we're saying that current PUDs would be left alone to self-manage.
These, these, these current ones are up for, you know, council to let us know-
Right.
-what you'd like to do, but if there was a newly-formed PUD, that would be subject to any cap that is fixed, or what's current, because they're not itemized here, is not being subject to a cap.
So I'm saying the same thing.
Okay, beg your pardon.
I agree, maybe I didn't say it very well, but I agree.
Okay.
The future ones, okay.
So, quick question, so say we get rid of Maple Gate, out of the, make it, move them from the exempt to non-exempt, if there's, say, seven short-term rentals in there, now all of a sudden, they're, we're going to go above the cap? Or are they going to, see, in my mind, zoning is supposed to protect the neighbors, and if Maple Gate seems like their own little neighborhood, if they've got their own homeowners association, I don't see the need that we need to add them to the non-exempt status, because they're, the number of short-term rentals they have in their little community isn't going to impact other neighborhoods.
I agree, leave them exempt.
That's why I was wondering on the caper ratio, because that's what you're really getting down to on this question, is the cap and the ratio.
Well, yes, right, yes and no. So I want to know if we need to create, you know, if we need to continue these two different classifications, because they're two different classifications, right? One is part of a cap, a ratio cap, right now, versus do we not set these as part of the cap? So-
Well, that, that I would have to ask for legal counsel for, because if we've already granted them the status, now we're going to try and take it away? I may have bought my home there in, in Maple Gate, and now you want to put me as part of that and take it away from me? I don't think we can do that.
Right, I'd definitely have some concerns with that. I think theoretically, I know council member said 497, but if there was a desire to make these exempt PUDs non-exempt, you could add however many are existing to that number. I would still have some concern about maybe owners who didn't have the opportunity to get a short-term rental permit. I believe you said the last condo was just sold for Maple Gate. You know, that particular owner may have bought with the intent to, to develop a short-term rental, and that could potentially become an issue. So we'd have to be careful with the way that we did that, but if there was desire to do it, I think we could, could probably draft around and address that, that type of circumstance, maybe provide a window of a certain length to allow registration in that circumstance. But I would definitely be concerned with-
Me too.
-keeping the cap at exactly 497, while adding new properties into the mix that we already know have permits.
That being said, I'd be for leaving everything the way it is.
Yeah.
On the PUDs and the site condos.
So Nick, if we left them exempt business STRs, the condos and the PUDs, I don't see any advantage of making them non-exempt. There's no upside to it, so why not just, rather than putting you through the legal tightrope on this thing, just leave them right where they're at? We kind of agree that they should be left to self-manage, then leave them right where they're at, and then we have no problem.
That, that seems to make, to make sense. I mean, as was initially described, part of the reason why these PUDs were excluded was to encourage their development, meaning that the ability to, to have short-term rentals was, the thought was that that could make these easier to sell. So the developers built these condominiums out, kind of with that in mind, potentially, and may be upset if that ability is now taken away through an ordinance amendment.
I think we're back to a no-throughout, so I did, leave them all alone. I think you've got everybody pretty much nodding.
Okay.
No, so there you go.
Letitia, did you say leave them all, leave as is?
Yes, it's a leave it, yeah.
Wendy, did you say, did you have a?
I, I feel like how it is now is the best way for now.
And Joe, I think I've got, I started writing and then I broke off, so it's leave as is?
So leave them exempt business STRs.
Okay. All right. And Mayor, did you want to leave as is?
As is, yep.
Okay. All right. So I think we've got, I think we have seven, leave as is.
Yep.
Okay. All right. So let's go on to personal versus business. So I've got on here, do you want to limit personal STRs? And I, and I put that in here, because I know we've had some, some talks about personals, and in a way, we've already talked about the businesses STRs when we talked about the fixed versus floating cap. So just to recap, personal STR is a land use, consisting of a residential dwelling unit that may be rented for no more than six short-term rental terms, for no more than 28 days in a calendar year. Do you want to limit or prohibit new personal permits? Do you want to convert personals into something else, into a, a business permit? Do you want to make new restrictions for more personal, if you want to continue to issue personal permits, do you want to add restrictions to? Because as, as a land use, you, you're, you're limited on what you can do with them, unless you're doing something, I guess, converting them into a business permit, or if you're kind of putting a line in the sand and saying, "These new ones would have more restrictions." Does that make sense? Yes, sir?
So to answer this, or to discuss it, you have to go back to the beginning, four and a half years ago, because I remember it very well. The intent of personal business, excuse me, personal short-term rentals, was to give the residents a chance, if they lived here, that they could rent their home a couple weeks up to 28 days, where we turned that way, it turned out, that they could take their current home and rent it a few weeks. If they go on vacation, they rent it. If they just need the extra income, they could rent it up to 28 days. That all sounds very, very good, but it was also initially stated- But it was also initially stated that it would only be for residents who owned the property as their, as their homestead property. For residents, not investors, to come in and do personal short-term rentals. As I understand it now, it's very hard to enforce it, and we are getting more personal short-term rentals than in the past because we hit the cap on the ratio. So now people, in my humble opinion, are abusing it. So, the fair way, I think, to keep everyone happy, if, if you, Nick, or we get a lawyer that can say, let's go back to the beginning and say, let's make personal short-term rentals allowed, but they have to be by residents, and someone in the audience talked about the rights of residents, let's make them for the residents only. Now, that may take some digging legally, but as I understand it, talking to someone on planning and a couple other people, that we're not the only community that gives different rights to residents than we do to non-residents. So, I would support, if we could, to keep personal short-term rentals, but limit it future ones to residents. Because if not, someone buys a piece of property, they say they're only going to make it a personal short-term rental, and they rent it all summer. Now, how the heck can the city monitor and enforce that? They really can't. So I'd like to see it be limited as it was originally intended for residents to rent their home a few weeks a year, in this case, twenty-eight days.
Okay, you don't need a cap. You're not looking for a hard number here, right? Just to allow or not allow? Like, kind of as discussed in the packet, is it a hardship or whatnot, so?
Well, I put some ideas in there that I had heard, and I wasn't sure if there, where people wanted to land with personals. So I guess I was going to look to this board to kind of help, kind of guide this discussion. But I think Mr. Reeser brought up a good point, which is, you know, can you restrict personals to residents? And how do you, how do you define residents? I mean, it's, it's a piece of property. So once you buy it, are you, you know, I mean, I guess that's what I'm looking to Nick to help here.
So, I, I do remember, I believe it was in 2018, this idea of requiring a principal residence exemption to run a personal was considered by the Planning Commission. I do think that's legal, at least prospectively. There are other communities that do it. The potential problem would be kind of forcing that requirement retroactively on, on personals that don't satisfy that. I don't know how many of those we have, or if we even have any. Because of the way the personal program is set up, you're only supposed to be renting for twenty-eight days. And then there's the question of what the property owner would be doing for the remainder of the year. It's likely that most personals are, already have the, that principal residence exemption. But that's something we would need to look at in drafting this. I think we could, at the very least, if council wanted to, put that restriction in place for any new personals, that you have to be, have the personal residence exemption, which means you have to live there the majority of the year.
You have to live there the majority of the year, or just not claim it for another town?
You have to live there the majority of the year.
What if you're deceased, and it goes into a trust or a?
There are very specific rules at the state level as to how that's handled. I can't tell you every, every scenario, but that's, that is something that I think the state law takes into account. You could, I think you have some period of time before you have to, to show whether there's someone living there or not.
Longer than twenty-eight days, though, right?
I believe so.
George?
Nick? So, if I understand you right, one of your concerns is the non-exempt personal STRs, the people already have them, could have a legal position that if we tried to restrict them, that do, the people that don't live here. So why couldn't we find a middle ground and say, those that already have a non-exempt personal STR, that number, I think it was ninety-seven the last time I looked, but whatever that number is, you free, you, you freeze that. Don't touch them, they already have it, so we don't take it away from them. But going forward, any additional personal short-term rentals has to be for residents only, and then up to whatever days we agree, twenty-eight days. Kate said she wanted to take it from six to four. Doesn't mean a lot to me. But we just can't have a complete proliferation of additional short-term rentals under the guise of saying it's a personal one, when in fact they're going to rent them all summer. And I don't know how the city can track all that.
I, I think that could be done. That's what I meant when I said we could, that's something I strongly believe council has the authority to do prospectively. Retroactively would mean applying that same restriction to ones that already exist. And I still think that's maybe possible. We want to take a look at how many we have that would not meet the criteria, if any. Again, there should be substantial overlap between personals and, and homes with the principal residence exemption. But I, but our ordinance doesn't currently require that overlap, so we need to do, do some analysis.
Sounds good. George, what are your thoughts?
So I, I think that there, I still would like to keep the personal short-term rentals. I think there's a, there's a, I think they, they are good, in my mind. And I'm, I'm not sure the original intent was for just residents to rent there, but for, if you're going to, whether you're, whether it's your principal residence, or it's your second home, if you're going to spend the majority of the time there, as opposed to renting it out, then to me, that's, that's where a personal short-term rental comes in. And I see a clear distinction between that scenario and the scenario where someone has a property and they don't spend any time there themselves, they're going to rent it out the whole time. That is definitely a business short-term rental. So I would like to keep the personal short-term rentals. I, I think there are some things we can do to make sure it's not being abused. I, I, I concur, we don't want the personal short-term rentals to be a workaround for the cap on the business short-term rentals. As far as the other questions go, the, the one I wanted to mention is the, the fees, the fees should definitely be set by resolution. And if we don't change anything in the ordinance, we should definitely change that. And because the fees should cover the cost for the personal short-term rentals. And, yeah, so I think we should still keep them.
And George, would you, because there's been a suggestion to add a requirement that they're for residents or for people who have been determined to be residents, would you add that restriction or regulation for any new?
I would not, because I think you don't have to be a resident to, to spend a good portion of your time at your property. I mean, you can, it could be a second home, and you're going to spend the majority of the time there, as opposed to how often you rent it. Maybe you're going to rent it for three weeks, and you're going to spend, you know, six weeks there. To me, that, that still is a, is, meets the criteria of a personal short-term rental. But they may not be their homestead.
Okay.
Can I ask a quick question? Is there a difference between homesteading, which means you own it, you live there, that's your primary, and a person that is not there all the time, to George's point? But like my wife and I for eighteen years, we had a place and every weekend we went. Now, those people should be included, as George is saying, I understand that. Can you legally differentiate that from a person who buys a property, is never there? I think it's called owner occupied. So owner occupied, can you put that in with the homestead and make that one category? And then take those who buy a piece of property that are never there, and only bought it with the intent to rent it out? Which to me is abusing the intent of a personal short-term rental. Can you legally differentiate the owner occupied and lump that in with the homestead, and put the other in a separate category and restrict that category? Does that make sense how I'm asking?
Yeah, it, it does make sense. I, I think you can legally do that. The trick would be enforcement. And the reason why communities that have done this, that I'm aware of, have tied it to the principal residence exemption, is I think it partially from an enforcement standpoint, when people are claiming the personal residence exemption, they're submitting, you know, signed paperwork where they're swearing they live there for six months to the state, I think, under penalty of perjury potentially. And it gives kind of just a clear enforcement mechanism, either they have it or they don't. If you're allowing second homeowners to also be deemed residents under your ordinance, you're going to have to define what that means, so how long they're in South Haven. And then you're going to have to find a way to prove that they are or not, or not, here, that a length of time. And I think that would be very tricky from an enforcement standpoint.
I would agree. Wendy?
Well, I, I do tend to lean toward what George was saying and what Joe concurs with. Although, yeah, the proof and enforcement seems like it's going to be complicated. I do think that, because there are opportunities for developers and investors to move toward the personal STRs when the business STRs are at their cap, I would like to see some kind of restrictions placed on them instead of just open to anyone with a house in South Haven. Depending on if we can do something similar to what George and Joe were saying.
So would you require a personal resident, residence exemption to be filed? Is that one thing that you're thinking of, or is there anything else? Like, any, any ideas you might have?
I don't have any ideas off the top of my head. So if it was that, or if there was a way to have those second homeowners do, who do have a significant amount of time that they spend here, or what Joe was saying, the owner occupied kind of situation, that's just what I would lean toward, versus the ones that are empty other than these rental periods.
For me, like Mr. Agnello said, I'm worried about enforcement, enforcement, enforcement. And I think with the business short-term rental cap, that the personal short-term rentals are going to get exploited. So with that in mind, I would be in favor of a hundred percent principal home exemption. I know it's easy to get, but it would just be nice to hold some people accountable, make sure that they're following the rules, and that they're not getting abused. I mentioned earlier, I would support a cap on personal short-term rentals, but I'm not hearing that from my counterparts. And I guess I would probably seek more guidance from people in Ward Two, if they wanted me to pursue that. I think that might be a good idea, but I'd probably need to hear more from my constituents on that one.
I would be for leaving it the way it is and just stricter and stronger enforcement. And the reason I, I would keep the personals the same, the way they are, if I, if I have a second home that I'm renting out monthly or long-term to somebody, and I want to sell that home, and I know their lease is coming up in two months from now, because of my understanding is when a home changes ownership, you can actually evict quicker the, the renter. Because it, once it changes hands and ownership, I believe that's the case. If I know their lease is coming up, then I can keep my second home. And if it doesn't sell in the next thirty days, once they moved out, then I can at least try and recoup some of the money before it does sell, if I can still keep that personal short-term rental. And if, for twenty-eight days, I don't, I don't think a twenty-eight day rental or a six-time or four-time rental is, is part of the problem in town. I think maybe the enforcement might be, and stronger enforcement is where I'll come down on that.
I cannot feel like some of my other counterparts, that enforcing it would be kind of difficult. I like what Mr. Arnold said about maybe just going one hundred percent principal home exemption, or having a camp, a cap for a personal, short-term. Those are my thoughts.
Okay, thank you. Mayor?
So my thought is, when we started this, we had a good intention. We heard stories of hardship, we heard stories of, I'm losing my house, I need to rent my home for two weeks a year to pay my taxes. And I feel like we got business STR light. So that's my concern. I don't think we can enforce what we've got. So my question, I guess, for, before I make a final decision, I just want to hear from, I mean, I don't expect to have this answer now, but what do you think it's going to cost to really figure out how we could enforce this concept of, I'm here, I'm not here? I mean, PRE, I'm good with that, a minimum of PRE. I'm good with hardship, because I feel like we, we tried to create this as a relief valve, because you couldn't pay your taxes. And I heard that, that was kind of the message. I were like, okay, we should have this option for people. So in that regard, I feel like we were trying to do a good thing, and, and like, maybe I'm sold the house. And you could come to the city and go, I need to rent this house for the summer, or not the whole summer. But whatever period we decide, is it two weeks? What's the magic number? So I would, for me, I would, I guess I need to prove to me we can enforce what we've got, show me cost. I'm, again, I'm good with the concept for what I feel like was the intent, which is a relief valve for extraordinary circumstances. So, I don't know if that's kind of what others heard when we talked about it. But that would be my hope, more of a relief valve, not just another business STR, shorter version.
I do know that this year, we really took a hard look at the personal STRs and, and whether you like it or not, we were not focusing a lot on the personal STRs in, in previous years. The primary focus was always on the business STRs, and making sure that they were following, kind of like the guidelines that we had set out. But this year, we had sent out a letter to personal STRs saying, hey, this is, you know, you're, you've got a personal STR permit. These are the rental, this is the restrictions that you have. Please share with us your rental periods, because that's part of the ordinance. And when we did hire our part-time code enforcement, code enforcement slash STR person, once they've gotten all the, the backlog cleared up, this is where they spend the majority of their time, is checking in with personal STRs. And currently, there are seventy-four that are non-exempt personals that have been issued. And just checking in, say, what are your rental dates, or you've, you've got five terms already, you only have one more term left. And in checking with department staff, we've issued over a hundred corrective actions this year on STRs alone. So we've been very proactive on that. Now, there's some things that we're always learning about the program and seeing what, what, what software there is out there, and then, of course, what people turn in to us that we can go out and investigate. I'm hearing a lot about, we need to enforce, 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 and that with the part-time person that we have here, that has been helping quite a bit. And if enforcement is the key, then maybe we need to look at that as we go into fee setting. And then, of course, the prices, I'm sorry, the, the, the fees for personals, because now, as you know, they're set at a hundred and twenty-five for two years. So that really doesn't reflect the amount of time it takes to ensure that those are, well, following the rules as they, as they need.
So, I don't know if I can get you straight for it. I'm, I guess I'm, I'm in favor, but I think we gotta, we gotta dial them in. For me, I'm, I would be in favor of some sort of a hardship clause. And I go that, I know that's going to take time, because again, I don't, if you've got a PRE here and a PRE in Florida, is that a hardship? I don't know, you know, it's like, that's, there's, we'll have to have that discussion. But I do just feel like it's sort of morphed into a little more than what this council intended when they created the personal STR, personally.
I believe that I've got one, two, three, four, five, for keeping the personals and looking at, one, better enforcement, and seeing if there's a way to bolster those. So we, we will investigate that. Of course, as we bring back the draft language, we have another crack at to make sure this is what council wants. So, we will go in that direction. One of the last things I wanted to talk about was inspections. As we have our four ninety-seven, as we have the number of personal units. Now, there are, I believe, sixteen personal units that are in the exempt areas, so that's roughly ninety personals. And then you have, I would say, you know, just shy of two hundred in the condos and the four PUDs. So that's putting a little over around seven seventy-five for, for all rentals. So business rentals, as you know, are inspected every year. Personal units are inspected every other year, but their registrations are renewed. Well, we send out a new notice to post in the window every year. Does, there is, is there any, any movement on council, or any wish to change the inspection schedule for either one of those types of permits? And consequently, and I also put on here, C, should we, do you want to still see the certificates posted in the window, or do you want to have them available just online?
I just had a thought. Is there a way we can put in the ordinance that, that future city councils can vote on that every year without having to go through changing the ordinance?
Which part, the inspections?
As far as if we want to change how often. As far as if we want to change how often, let's say the next council wants to have them every six months, or whatever the case may be. Can future councils just vote on, can we have the ordinance written so that quick changes can be made?
On specific items, yes, that, you could do it for-
Like fee structures and-
It's already that way for fees. You could do frequency of inspections by resolution, I think, if there's language authorizing that.
That would be my thought.
Okay. Anybody else?
Let's go, I'll start with Mr. Tish. What do you want? On inspections?
I'd say just leave it the same.
Leave it the same or by resolution in the future?
I think make business and personal the same. So ones, ones year, the ones by, every other year, let's make them the same, of the other, every other year, every two years, they get inspected. And same with the fees, we'll probably level off the fees. As far as the note in the, in the house, in the window, no, we don't need those. We have the B S A, B S N A, and neighbors, you know who, where the rentals are in your neighborhood, we don't need a note to, to see that.
Yeah, I like the idea of making them the same, but I don't know if there's an opportunity to, like whether it was a point system or levels where if someone passed the inspection with flying colors, then they maybe only have to go every two years or three years. If there are problems that come up, maybe they're flagged, so they get an annual until they get to that high level, just to create less of a burden on the inspectors, if that was the case. And I don't, I said this earlier, but, I mean, not today, but I don't know about needing the permit in the window, but I like having some kind of designation, because I don't, I don't know every short-term rental in my neighborhood, especially when, you know, they keep popping up. So I like to be able to visually identify that. I think it's kind of helpful for neighbors in terms of, you just knowing what's going on in your neighborhood. So I would, I would like to have some kind of designation for the rentals that are in our neighborhoods.
Do you agree with that?
Yes.
Okay.
I do.
George?
So I kind of like Wendy's idea. It seems to me that if, if somebody is, you know, passing their annual inspection with flying colors every year, it would seem like you could extend the frequency of that, their inspections. If, if the inspections are catching things, then you maybe need to do them more frequently. But two years can go by pretty fast. I like the idea of, of keeping them both the same, the personal and business, every two years. So, and I don't feel the need that we need to have the, the certificates in the windows if it's in, if it's online.
Gregor? Thank you. Joe?
So I would like to defer, to defer my answer to those who do the inspections. If once every two years for personal is okay with the inspectors, they seem to find that once every two years is good, I'm fine. Anything that cut back on bureaucratic red tape and more inspections than we need. But if they come back and say the personal ones are a real problem, we need to inspect them every year, then inspect them every year. So I don't know if that's much of an answer, but I, these are one of those, this is one of these questions that I'd rather have the experts tell me how often they have to do it. So I'll go either way.
Okay. I can tell you that 775 is a lot to get done. That's more than, you know, we have days of the year, so there's 365, and obviously, we don't work every day. But that is meaning that you're trying to hit multiple inspections per day, and, and I know that we're trying, we have to work with SHAs on this. So typically, right now, inspection's going Monday, Wednesday, and Friday. And so we're trying to allocate those inspection periods into those days. So, you know, if you're, if you're asking, would it alleviate some pressure if you're going to every other year or something like that? I think that would help with just the volume of, of permits that you have right now. And personals right now are, are inspected every other year.
My big question is what are they finding? Are they finding that every other year, the property is seen to be okay, just as good as the business short-term rentals that are doing every year? So if they came back and said, yeah, we have very few problems on personals, then do them every two years. Why create more work, more expense, if we don't need to do it? If they come back and say, we're finding real problems, and we need to do them every year, then do them every year. So let them make that determina, that's my opinion. Let them determine that.
Okay.
But I'd rather do less if we could.
Mayor?
Well, you put this on here because of me, so I think, you know, I'm, I'm for less. So, yeah, fewer, I mean, if they're passing inspections, they should be inspected less frequently. Everybody wins, so that's good. And no stickers in the window. It's on B S N A.
All right. So I, I get from here is that potentially seeing this in a resolution, would you all want to see inspections determined by resolution? I see, yes from Andy, I'm sorry, what?
You were asking about Steve Scummett?
Yes.
Yeah.
So I've got one from Jeff, Steve. Okay.
Maybe make it easier.
Okay.
Yeah, fees and, fees and inspection frequency, if they can go into resolution, I think that's a better way to do it.
Okay. Right. And then, in the meantime, because I know we'll go back and we can draft and get this started, we can also work with our department to find out, kind of get, get a ballpark as to who's passing the first time and, and get some data on, on those inspections for you. Okay.
Good start.
All right. And then one last thing. I'm not really sure where we are with certs or some certification or something in the window. I'm, I'm about 50/50. Latisha would leave something in the window, Wendy would as well. But I, I don't believe, Jeff says no, would not leave anything in the window. So did George. And Mayor Smith said nothing in the window, but I guess I'm a little lost with Mr. Reeser and Mr. Schlock.
I'll say nothing in the window. I think it's an invitation to trespass.
George? I'm sorry, I think you said nothing in the window, sorry, no certs.
Nothing in the window.
Right. Mr. Reeser, did you have an opinion?
Yeah, I agree. We have a computerized system, we don't need it in the window.
Okay. Okay. All right. Well, I think that's the guidance we were looking for. Okay. And I thank you all for, for talking with me and then kind of going through these questions and giving us some guidance. So we'll draft what we have here and bring you back some language, depending on how long it's going to take us some time to get that done. And if we have questions, we'll, we'll put some blanks in there and try to flesh that out. At our next, okay?
Thank you.
When we next bring it back.
All right. Next, we're getting an update from our chief of police, Ms. Natalie Thompson. Good evening, chief.
Thank you. Before I start with our statistics tonight, I wanted to just give you all an update on some of our more major cases that primarily, we have two in-house detectives that have been working very hard on not just the follow-up, but they've actually taken some of these originals. So these are just some highlights of some of our major cases that primarily our two detectives have been working on, and then also our road patrol. We recently obtained felony charges on a 37-year-old male suspect for accosting a child for moral purposes and C S C fourth degree with a victim who was 14 years old. It was a very lengthy investigation. The 14-year-old lived out of state, and the incident happened here, and the 37-year-old was from another county. So our detectives did a really good job investigating that and tracking the suspect down. Next, we obtained felony charges on a C S C first degree for an adult male, and this was kind of a cold case, C S C, but it involved a five-year-old victim who had been raped basically for several years throughout her childhood, began when she was five years old. So we do have a suspect who identified he was arrested, and that is actually pending a trial. We obtained felony charges on a suspect for an assault with a dangerous weapon, felony firearm, possession of a firearm, and habitual offender. And that was the suspect who was involved in the shooting that happened earlier this year at Blue Star in Phoenix. And just, you know, speaking about guns, the majority of the gun complaints we have are not legally owned guns. They weren't taken from a family member, they were stolen or purchased off the street. So the gun, one of the guns in that incident, unfortunately, we did not recover, but we did find the suspect and other evidence. Next, this is just an update on an armed robbery that we investigated last December. We had located quickly both defendants, were able to get charges on them. Again, our detectives did a lot of work. You know, I was watching TV, and I heard it on, on TV, you know, cell phones are the new DNA. One of our detectives has forensic training, and a lot of the, the cellphone tower and forensics that we obtained from the suspect's phones really put that case together. They both ended up pleading guilty. One has already been sentenced to prison, and the other is going to be sentenced shortly. Again, these two individuals, very lengthy criminal histories, both substantial safety threats to our community. So they did an excellent job on that case. More recently, in fact, Sergeant Hathaway Shift did an awesome job. We had an, an armed robbery at our Meyer back on July 27th, Thursday night. We had two officers working, so it was a lot. They did a really good job immediately, called in a crime scene technician. Were able to identify the suspect. Like I said, there were a lot of investigation since July 27th. So we were able to get a felony warrant on this person. We had been looking for him, and a lot of other agencies were also looking for this person. He was a parole abscondor, unattempted murder. The DEA was looking for him. He had been threatening some federal witnesses. So anyway, real bad guy. So basically, last Thursday night, Sergeant Hathaway Shift was dispatched to Walmart for another crime in progress, and they quickly got to the area. Suspects took off, but they did a very diligent job and were able to locate the suspect nonchalantly walking down County Road 388. So they were able to arrest him on our armed robbery warrant, along with a lot of other very serious warrants. So did an excellent job, I mean, on handling the first armed robbery. The second incident was not an armed robbery, but, you know, he's in our area, and he won't be for a very long time. So they did an excellent job. And that was a combination of our detectives investigating, getting him identified, and then, you know, our road patrol doing a really good job with old-fashioned police work. And then finally, because we like to protect our animals too, our road patrol, Officer Van Brussels did an excellent job. He handled the investigation, and I know it was on Facebook. I think Alvania put something on there, but there was an individual who dumped a crate full of very tiny puppies behind a business, had them behind some bushes, basically left them to die. It was a very hot day. Good Samaritan brought the dogs to us, Alvan. We were able to rescue them. So since that time, Officer Van Brussels and one of our detectives were able to identify that person. He's from Indiana, but we used a lot of methods to identify him, and we currently have a felony warrant for that individual for animal cruelty. So I just wanted to give you an, an idea of some of the, the bigger cases that our officers are working on. And like I said, we have a very good clearance rate for our more, our serious cases. Now, back to the statistics, and this is January 1st through July 31st of this year. Our overall type, top five offenses are driving violations, assault, larceny, obstructing justice, and retail fraud. For our prison crimes, the top five are assault, homicide or manslaughter, kidnapping, sex offense, non-forcible, and sexual assault. And then the next pie chart just breaks down mostly all the, the different property crimes that we have. For the year, for arrests, we are up to 365. We had 441 total last year. Citations and warnings, we are up to 1,563. So we'll probably beat last year, we had 1,685. So again, the officers are really stepping up enforcement. Foot patrol hours, we are at 213. Property checks, 684. Our calls for service total are 2,297. That is 663 in the township, and then 1,634 in the city. Our overall complaints, and these are incidents that we take a report on, are 1,271. And on the last page, we've got a, a breakdown of just some of the ordinance citations, and I primarily run that to, to see how many golf cart tickets we've written, because I know that is a, a top concern of, of many of the citizens, including most of you. So as of July 31st, the officers have had written 61 golf cart tickets. And then I did a tally today from July 31st until today, and got the number, we are up to 96 golf cart tickets. So I know during the Blueberry Festival weekend, besides being a busy weekend, I think they wrote 15 golf cart tickets just on that weekend. Information center update, we are pleased to announce Heather Ramsey is our new full-time information center clerk. She started two weeks ago and is progressing very well through training. So we are very happy to have her on our team. Blueberry Festival, had a very busy weekend, a lot of people in town. Our department, we, as we always do, we provided assistance for the Blueberry Festival 5K run, and for the parade. I had an officer in on overtime to help with this. And then throughout the weekend, we pretty much had a little bit of everything. There were more parking complaints than I could count. Unfortunately, we did have to tow a few vehicles. We had a couple of mental health crises, suicidal individuals that took quite a bit of time. We had an embezzlement come in. We had a domestic civil dispute. We had a traffic stop for a very high-speed traffic violation that ended in an arrest. We had a substantial domestic assault with an arrest. We had attempted to arrest a C S C first-degree suspect, and that ended up in a, a fight with one of the officers, and unfortunately, he was able to get away. So we are still looking for him. We had a group of juveniles that were caught shoplifting at Meyer. Meyer loss prevention called us, so that took time trying to track down parents. So in addition to that, we did our normal foot patrols, heavy traffic enforcement. It was a busy weekend, but the officers, they did a very good job being proactive, I would say, for the weekend.
Very good. Well, thank you for taking bad people off the street, number one. We appreciate that. Bobby Walker-Turney, it was nice to see everybody recognized.
Yes.
Who do you, all your officers, it was fun. It was nice to see several of the new officers there.
Yes, and I might have mentioned, it was a nice opportunity for some of our newer officers to, to get introduced, so that went over very well.
I did like the, and I can't remember who it was, but basically, as commented, it was nice to meet everybody, and I hope we don't see it at a traffic stop. I still laughed when I heard, it was like, just made me just smile inside, so.
It's our future department.
Right, exactly. Great, nice to see everybody there, young and, young and a little bit older, so.
Chief, you said one of the officers was involved in a physical altercation with a C S C, was the officer okay?
Yes.
Just minor?
Yeah, he's good.
Hopefully, just bumps and bruises, nothing.
No, he is. Yeah.
Thank you for all you do. I'll just leave it at that, of both of you, so.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Have a great night.
Thank you very much.
All right. All right. Now, are you guys good to go to public comment? Get them to go? I think we should be closed, so.
Yeah.
Good to go? Okay. Public comment, this is for items not on the agenda, so this is not about rentals. So if you'd like to talk about something that we have not talked about tonight, please feel free to come up and you will have five minutes to state your name and address. Just thought I'd preface that.
Sure.
Thanks. Danagnello, 964 Everett Parkway. I must commend the police force and everything. The Bobby Walker Tournament is like two blocks from my house. They have a great time. Never had any, never had any problem. I just don't have time to go in and watch some of the games, especially on Sunday when the championships are. But the cleanup was fantastic. We drove by Saturday night or whether it was their Sunday morning and there was papers and everything all over. Drove by after championships, I didn't see one piece of paper. So they really did a nice job. I'm sure they had a group that just went around and cleaned things up, because they did. Now, Nick's not here right now, but he mentioned PREs. I asked our deputy assessor to check on five properties that were all claiming PREs and they're basically owned by the same person, but they tried to skirt the system, they've tried to play the system, they've got it in their name and their wife's name and their brother's name and whoever's name, and they form LLCs. And this PRE, PRE thing is going to be really hard to check, okay? In fact, the person actually lives in one of the townships and he has these other four houses that he's claiming PREs on, okay? Then I'd like to finish the talk on the Hales Building. As I mentioned before, there are, on the fifth floor, and I've complained, the building is great. It's a great project. Locker and Locker have done a lot of things for this town and it's a great project, okay? But we have a five-story building. Like I said, 62 feet plus all your penthouses for your HVAC and elevator shafts and everything. And he's got, you know, he talked about two-bedroom, three-bedroom units, which is great. He's got that on the second, on the third and fourth floors, whatever. But on the fifth floor, he's got one of 4,23500 and three 1940 feet, or 3940 feet, square feet condos. So if you do the math, you add them all up and you figure $350 a square foot, which is very, very, very conservative, you're talking about $5.3 million that he's going to bring in. And I feel he's going to use the condos as his way to help fund the project, okay? I put in my email that you received that the council or planning commission should go out with Shays, with the ladder truck, and put the ladder truck at 45 feet, put it at 62 feet, and put it at 45 feet. And you will see how disruptive that is to the profile of Center Street. I took a bunch of pictures on Center, Quaker, and Phoenix. So if you're going to be looking down Center Street from Phoenix, you're going to see a, actually, 70 to 75-foot building, like I said, but basically, you're going to see a 62-foot building with all the penthouses on top of it. And it's going to ruin the character of the neighborhood, of the downtown area. It's a, it's a great development, don't get me wrong, but development should not have a five-story building. Like I said, Fifth Third Bank had to go down, had to go by the DDA rules and they're trying to skirt it by putting a PUD. And I want, I want staff, if they want to consider that, I want the staff to show me what tangibles we're getting from Locker and Locker for allowing them to have a five-story building. This is going to, this, once this is done, you can't change it, okay? We're setting a precedence and anybody else wants to build, and some of the lots that they have downtown, then they can say, oh, Locker and Locker did five stories, so we can do five stories. So let's stick to our ordinances the way they are. Thank you.
Thank you. Was there anybody else? Anybody else? Going once, going twice?
811 Indiana Street. Let me know if I'm on the agenda tonight, if this topic overlaps, but, or this question We have a system in place where you can call in and if you have issues with short-term rental property, and we actually keep logs or records on how many calls we get, right?
We have a, you know, we take in complaints and we investigate them.
Don't we keep track of the complaints?
We do, through the police department.
Okay. So I guess my question, it would make it harder to keep track of the complaints if I don't know the house beside me is actually, or the house down the street is actually a short-term rental?
Well, I should also, we, the police are tracking like nuisance complaints, noise and that kind of thing.
But aren't most of the complaints, when they come in, they actually identify it's a short-term rental property?
Well, some people will call in, they know it's a short-term rental, some do not, but we can internally check to see if they are, you know, a short-term rental property.
I just thought it would make it seem to, make it harder to track issues with short-term rentals if I don't know this house down the street is really a short-term rental. Right, as of right now, the only way I know is by the sign in the windows. So I just thought it would make it a little more difficult to keep track of the actual complaints if there's no identifier on the outside. And that's just, that's just my.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Nothing? All right. Kate?
Thank you, Mayor. A couple of things I wanted to bring everyone's attention to is that, as was mentioned, on September 7th, the Planning Commission is having a public hearing on the multi-story mixed-use project being proposed by Randy Locker. It will be a public hearing at the Planning Commission, so at 7:00 PM. I did want to thank South Haven Rotary for their generous donations last Friday to, to the purchasing of lifering cabinets for the piers, as well as their donation to install three AEDs in our beach safety patrol vehicles. So thank you very much to South Haven Rotary for that very, very warm and very generous gift. I did want to thank, similar to Chief Thompson, I wanted to thank the National Blueberry Festival Committee, as well as various city staff and various departments, and all the different nonprofits and people and organizations that work on National Blueberry Fest. There's a lot that goes into that, so my thanks to all of them. I did want to highlight that I was just notified that Representative Joey Andrus is having, I'm sorry, Joey Andrews is having a listening tour in his district and he'll be coming to South Haven, talking to the South Haven City Township and Casco Township on Monday, August 28th at 5:30 PM to 6:30 PM at the Listiak Auditorium. I'll make sure that I can put that out to council members to share. And then I did want to, we did hear about gun, gun safety from Representative Gail Patterson, so, or County Commissioner Gail Patterson. I just want to let everyone know, we do have gun locks for, to give away for free at the South Haven Police Station, so if you go to the lobby there, we have those gun locks that we can give out. We still have those for free. And then my, my last comment is that our next meeting will be Tuesday, September 5th, and we are hoping to have that in Stanley Johnston Park, right off of Park Avenue, so George, you don't have to walk very far. And, but if there is a whiff of bad weather, if we anticipate bad weather, we're going to just move it back to council chambers. So those are my comments. Thank you.
Great question. Could you repeat something for me?
Yes, sir.
The Rotary Club donated three AEDs to our police officer, so three of our units.
Yes.
Yep.
So we have two of the mules and then we have a retired police car that we are using, so they donated three AEDs for our beach safety.
Okay, so two going mules.
That's correct.
So they can be used on the beach.
That's correct.
Which is where I'm going with the other one. So then, beach throwing cabinets.
That's correct.
So we can leave rings out longer, even year-round?
That's correct. Yes, that's correct.
That's awesome news. That's awesome news, yeah. Great, thanks.
Thank you.
Good questions. If there's nothing else, I'll go to my ladies, to Ms. Latisha.
I just want to say thanks to the police department for a job well done during the Blueberry Fest and the Bobby Walker Tournament. Thanks to Mr. Walker for wonderful, another wonderful tournament and, oh, we just started school today for the teachers and so summer's over for me.
How was your first day back? Your first official day back?
Long.
Without students.
Long.
Oh, there we go. Long.
It was long.
Thank you for teaching.
Had a hard time, had a hard time waking up, yes.
Well, thank you. We appreciate you. See you.
Thank you, staff. Thank you to our officers and our police department. Thank you very much for the report, Natalie.
No comment.
Also, no comment.
No comment tonight. Quick thank you to all those at work and provide service at hospice. It's a great organization and the fundraiser they had last Saturday night was wonderful and I loved seeing a lot of people there and it couldn't have been more perfect weather. And then the last one is thank you to all the veterans and the celebration the city put out, put out for them. It was amazing to watch the jets fly over top of the band and all the other veterans, so it was really a nice event. Thanks.
Well done. All right, I will reach, thank you to Bobby Walker and all that helped out with the Bobby Walker Tournament, which was on Blueberry Festival weekend. He did give this council, and I'll ring it, I left it on my desk, but a certificate just to all of us recognizing our work as council members. So Bobby, every year does that, if you're not familiar with that, he puts on a basketball tournament and also does a fantastic job of recognizing good things in the community, good people, so he's just a good human. So we did give him proclamation on that day as well. We'll drag him in here and embarrass him publicly. So as Kate said, next meeting is Stanley Johnston Park, Tuesday the 5th. Had a very nice meeting up at Holland, Great Lakes Coalition, Joey Andrews did come and he did a nice job. I will say, we heard for the first time maybe a benefit of some of the redistricting. So we have now a coalition of lake shore communities that have a vested interest in what's going on in the shoreline. So there's actually some synergy now of what we could do to protect the shoreline and we, as we have, I don't know, Gail mentioned a little bit about shoreline, but are there ways to, you know, is there, is there another alternative to rock and steel that maybe includes something called sand to bring back to? So this group is doing a lot of work, Joey's involved, there's a project they're going to do on St. Joe to look at a renourishment project. So as I was at the meeting, I mentioned to Kate, I said I would ask that staff if we could figure out a way to set aside, seeing as this council sat through the high-water crisis and that we didn't have money set aside, there was no, I don't, pick the dollar amount, but that the council would see every year an annual budget for high-water response, whatever it might be. Because I didn't know that it would come up every 20-some years, so we know it's going to occur again.
Maybe it's a natural disaster.
So everyone that sits up here would go, why is this amount here, Kate? And you would have to tell them, because in 20 years, the water's going to come up and make a great big mess and it's going to cost us a whole bunch of money and it's not going to be enough money to cover it, but it's on people's radar that it's coming. So I don't, again, I'm just, it's my only favorite. I had no idea. I wish I would have known at the time. I, kind of reminds you when we did the water plant, we didn't have any money saved, so even if it's some money. So anyway, it was a good meeting. Again, as mentioned, salute to veterans, Bruce Thatcher and all involved, fantastic event. I got to go out with Jim McLuid, who sang to us most of the way out on the boat, which is, you know, Jim, he told jokes and he sang the whole time out. He's a wonderful man. Finally, just, did anybody go with a 5K run? I want to shake your hand. How long after the gun went off till the first boom of thunder?
It was pretty, I would say it was less than a mile into the race.
Yeah, it was pretty quick. And then the floods came down and it was pretty impressive. I mean, it was boom and then boom. And I mean, you got wet.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, it came down. I mean, you got wet. I mean, it was impressive.
That's why I ran so slow.
Right. I mean, you were, anyway, it was, so congratulations, I'll shake your hand on that. It was very impressive. I was just like, I saw the cloud, it was dark and they ran and off they went, so anyway, I just watched. So there you go. On that note, thanks all for coming. Thanks, we have a great staff, great community. Go out and enjoy it. So have a great holiday too. We went back after the holidays, so happy holiday, happy first day of school, drive safe, go slow, the buses are back on the road.
Yeah, Monday, Monday.
Go slow, take your time. And that's it. I'll seek a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Motion, second to adjourn. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, we're adjourned. Thanks, everybody. Have a great night.
Boom.